Status of general funds, as well as a little memo to document that we would be taking a vote to appoint Catherine Clear as our delegate to the M A S C conference down in Hyannis every November. That's hopefully sounds familiar because I'm blanking on the dates and everything. So I know I put the dates in the memo, so if you're curious, there is an annual conference down there and by giving her that delegate status, she's empowered to vote and take part in the deliberations. So, any questions on the consent agenda? Motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, great. All in favor? Thank you. Up and running, all set, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Just raise your hand and you'll be promoted to a panelist and unmuted or in person at the microphone. We'll just give a minute for anybody to take a moment and raise their hand. Okay, thank you. And next up is informational updates, and we'll start with the superintendent.
Sure. So, in the packet, you'll see, we actually just included it a little while ago, there's a draft for the educational profile questionnaire, which is part of our requirements for the MSBA process right now, and that is, we'll be submitting that October 30th. It doesn't require any vote on your part, as some of the other pieces do. And in addition to that, we've been completing their enrollment, there's an enrollment platform that they have where we had to complete a number of different pieces for that also for October 30th. And I want to thank Kathy Mucci. She's been doing a phenomenal job collecting all that, working with our town partners. It's been, you know, getting information about the number of permits and births and all these different types of things that we wouldn't necessarily have access to. And so people have been helping us with that, and so we're appreciative of that. But it's part of this first phase that we're in. This is really one of the first big deadlines that we'll have. So, I worked with Jeff Goodwin and principals Lacoste and Myerson to sort of put together a short narrative about the Robinson School and the Abbott School together as they're looking at that potential consolidation. So that profile's just there for your information. Last week was the unified basketball home game against Garroton. I know a couple of you were there. It was awesome to see. One of the things that I was really impressed with was not, first of all, the team. The partnership between all of the students on the team is just awesome to watch. The sportsmanship between both of the teams was wonderful. And it was just a really enjoyable event. And one of the things that I thought was great was that so many of our other teams adjusted their practices and rehearsals, different clubs and groups adjusted their afternoon so that they could fill the student section. And so the student section was full. It was just great. It was a really, a really, really, really great event. And I'm glad, it was their last home game. There's one more game left, but I, that one's a away game, yeah.
It was hard to walk away from that feeling anything but good.
Yeah, right? I mean, it's just a, it's just awesome. I'm thankful for all of the staff members who have stepped up to support that and the families who have been really engaged in making that a possibility. I want to thank the Health Department. Last week, they sponsored a flu clinic for staff, for employees, town employees here. I benefited. I came in and got my flu vaccination, which was awesome. But they set up here. It's been really busy here with early voting and the flu clinic and a couple of other events, so it's been interesting to see all of the traffic that's been coming through this building the last two weeks. Last week, Courtney Moran and I participated in a webinar with the Attorney General's Office that was throughout the state. It was bringing schools together, combating hate in schools specifically. And they shared resources with us that I'm going to be sending out to families in my next update on November 1st, that's just reminding people about our commitment and what the state law says about the environments that we should be creating in schools. And so I just thought it was a great, great opportunity for schools to come together and sort of make this, well, just to reaffirm our commitment to, you know, to being a place where we were not going to stand for hate and working towards anti-bias in our schools, which I thought was great. Next week, I know the middle school students are really eager that the yonder pouches are going to be rolled out next week. So, I've been talking with the principals about that. They haven't been getting a lot of questions about it. I think they've been communicating well with the families, which has been good. So we'll see the logistics involved and we'll be able to report back to you in a little while as to how that's going. But that is going to officially take place next week. What else do we have? Oh, the, well, a couple, I have two WA things, so if I step on your toes, Maddie, I apologize in advance, but I'll just, well, no, I won't. I'll stop and we'll see. And if you don't say them, then I'll, then I'll chime in, but I'm going to stop there.
Okay, thank you. School committee updates.
Graduation requirements, working group continues to meet. You like where we're getting to a point that we'll be finalizing some recommendations to bring back to this committee. Lot of discussion about phys ed requirements, you know, and the difference between phys ed and athletics. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of that, but just stay tuned for that. And then, you know, capital, we're hearing from Jeff on the school stuff today, but hearing a lot of the town needs. So there's going to be a lot of balancing of what, what we can do this year, so.
School start times met last week. We had a very informed discussion with Principal Dan Toomey and Athletics Director Jeff Bunyan, kind of centered around an estimated scenario of a two-tier transportation model, looking at an eight o'clock start, kind of use that as a baseline right now. We learned a lot of the challenges that WA faces and its afternoon schedules right now, the obligations that some of our students have immediately after school. There's not a lot of time. You've got to check in sometimes with advisors or teachers, transportation to the fields, not easy for some of our teams, just some of the location and facility constraints that our teams face. You know, just for examples here, West Fit in BD for swim, Skate III in Tinsborough for hockey, the Weston Ski Track for our Nordic team. I mean, that's a pretty far distance. So, the pressures even on some of our teams to finish in certain fields like Stony Brook and Nutting before the town comes in to use them. So, differences between the practice versus the game structures and schedules. So just a very good, you know, two-way conversation. Dr. Chu was there as well. Dr. Chu's going to be presenting some summary information to the leadership team soon, and that's going to hopefully be the start of some feedback gathering as we push towards that final confirmation recommendation window. You know, we're also waiting on the route maps and some of the bus and student numbers to really materialize for us, so.
Okay. Any other things? Policies all over the agenda, so.
Yeah, I don't think so.
We'll be covering it.
Yeah. And student updates.
Okay. So, this week on Wednesday, we have the Stuko trunk or treat from five to seven, so that'll be really cool to see kind of all the clubs turn out and all the kids out before Halloween. It kind of, it's a fun, it's a fun week for all the kids and even some of the high schoolers. We have the Spirit Rally on-
That takes place?
It takes place in the WA parking lot. So typically, like, it's all clubs and athletic organizations that'll open their trunks and either like just hand out candy or like fun games. Like, I know, like, my swim team is thinking of doing like a kiddie pool and fill it with candy and kind of maybe some sort of game along with it. It's a fun way to-
Just for folks who are watching, what time is that? So it's in the student parking lot at what time?
Yeah, it's five to seven.
Thank you.
On Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yep. And then we had the Spirit Rally on Friday, which was very fun. I think it was, it was an exciting week last week with all the spirit days, and it definitely was boosted school morale, I think. I think everybody was, especially with the quarter closing Wednesday, too, I believe. It was exciting for kids to kind of have something fun to look forward to with our spirit days, you know. A lot of, you know, people dressing up in big costumes, and we had people decked out for USA Day and Beach Day, speakers in the hallway. It was a very fun, fun week. We have for seniors, the first college deadline for early action or early decision is November 1st, so there's a lot of that going on, at least for a lot of seniors. And then we also have very exciting Harry Potter. WA Theater Arts is starting their Harry Potter production this Thursday, which I am so excited about. I have my tickets for November 10th. I have the list of dates here. I don't know if I should list all of them out.
Yeah, please do.
So it's October 31st at seven, November 2nd at two o'clock and seven o'clock. And then they did do three more extended dates, November 10th at two o'clock, November 13th at seven o'clock, November 16th at two o'clock and seven o'clock. So, it's a very highly anticipated play, and it's, you know, if you haven't gotten tickets now, they are going to sell out fast. And then we also have a couple, as I'm sure most of you know, no school days coming up, which are, again, also exciting, or not depending how you look at it. Dewali on Friday, which is very exciting, and then Election Day on Tuesday, which is also very exciting, highly anticipated day for sure. And Tuesday, we also, or Monday, there's also a mock election going on for the government and politics classes, the AP classes during E and F blocks during the school day. The students that are, that their teachers have a free blocker, kind of have flexibility in their curriculum, will kind of take the kids down to Flag Lobby where there will be polls, like mock polls set up where kids can vote, and we can kind of get an election from WA, from the kids who can't officially vote in the presidential election, which is exciting. French Exchange students also arrived tonight. They should be here, probably in Westford around now. They're staying for 10 days till November 7th. They are doing tons of fun activities. They're taking part in a football tailgate, I believe, a day trip to Newport, Rhode Island. They're doing a group trick or treat, too. They're here during a very exciting time. They're here during a presidential election, Halloween, Dewali. It's, it's a very, very, yeah, fresh time. It's exciting. And yeah, that's pretty much all I have. Fun stuff.
Thank you.
The only other thing, because you covered, I had a couple of those things.
Oh, cool.
SASSA, the South Asian Student Association, reached out to me to ask if we would share that their DARBA, their Third Annual DARBA event is coming up. That'll be on the 15th.
That was on my next agenda, but yes.
Because it would, yeah. So we'll just give people a little bit of extra-
Sure, absolutely.
Time for that. But that was all-
Going to be a really good one. I've seen some of like the preparations parts. It's going to be very exciting.
And again, it's their third annual, third annual event, which I think is really cool. The only other thing about, I know we mentioned it before, but the fascinating thing about the Harry Potter piece is that, to remind everybody, every state in the country has one production. So Westford is the only production in the state of Massachusetts, which is really cool. So that's, you know, I think eventually we're going to see this everywhere, but right now, there are people from all over the place wanting to come and see this production because no one has been able to see a student version of this yet.
I've stumbled upon one of the rehearsals of one of the dances, and it was probably like a week ago, and they looked so cool. And as a very big Harry Potter fan myself, it's going to be incredible. I know some of my closest friends are the lead roles, and it's going to be very exciting to see them perform it. Obviously, they added three more, four more shows. It's very cool.
Yes. And normally, WADA performances are usually just show up in general admission, but this is by your-
It's assigned seats.
Yes, seats. The seating is when you buy your tickets on the CD map, so an incentive to check it out earlier instead of ending up in the back or on the sides. Thank you.
I was just thinking, maybe it's worth noting, because we always talk about voting in other contexts, too. Voting is Tuesday, right?
Yep. So there's been early voting-
Yep.
Here, eight to four, I believe, is-
At Millennium, yeah.
Yes, sorry, at Millennium. And then Election Day is the two, we, reminder every time that we've minimized to voting locations. You're either at Stony Brook or WA, and finding your precinct is either on wheredoivoteMA.com or on the town website.
Okay. And to, again, Maddie's talking about the election that they'll have at WA. When we have our next meeting, I'll share with you, because I just, having, having spent a lot of time at a middle school, a lot of the schools tend to have mock elections. And so it'd be interesting to, to kind of share how many of the schools do that within their civics program.
I'm in the government and politics classroom, and it's very cool. We've been learning about the questions, like, on the ballot the past couple of weeks, kind of educating ourselves on it. And, you know, we have, we have ballot, we have the ballots today. My teacher's showing us, she has her ballot box, and it's, we're very excited to set it up. It's so cool. We've been-
Which is often the most complicated part.
Yeah.
Right?
It's been-
The different questions.
It's been such a cool to be a student in this class, especially this year with the presidential election. Kind of our curriculum has been really side by side with what we're learning in the textbook. It's been so cool. So it's, it's cool to put that to use and to kind of see how it, how it all comes out. So, yeah.
Thank you. Well, we'll move on to our business and start with Director of Facilities, Jeff Goodwin, presenting the list of capital projects that he'll be bringing to Capital Planning Committee this week, as well as maybe a couple of updates on your busy summer.
Yeah. It has been a busy summer, and thank you for having me here to discuss capital once again. We're hot into the planning season, and it's been a busy one. So, would you like me to do updates on the existing projects first, or do you want me to go right into the new list and then do some updates?
Your preference.
All right. We'll jump right into the, the new list of projects that I'll be bringing before capital on Friday.
Thank you.
Who's, you know, who's driving?
Perfect. Thank you. I apologize if the font is difficult to read. Some of them have more information than others. But, yeah, we'll start close to, close to home here at the Millennium, right next door at the Abbott Wastewater Treatment Plant. For anyone who's had the privilege to get close and, up close and personal with the wastewater treatment plant, you can tell that the exterior facade and roof have some deterioration issues. Might be difficult to see in the pictures there, but there's a significant amount of rotted fascia board and siding and, and deteriorated roof on that building. On the front, the picture on the left there, you can't really see it because it's kind of shadowed, but there is a significant amount of rust on the door and a good amount of moss growing on the front of the building. So, we're proposing a project to replace the roof, replace the siding, replace the rotted fascia board, all with PVC materials that will not rot down the road, and to also install a gutter on the front of the building to capture some of that water before it splashes all over the building. The Water Department in recent years has done a lot of work on the inside of the building, and now it's about high time that we take care of the exterior, so.
So if someone was just paying attention to this conversation right at this moment in time, they might be like, why is the school committee talking about the water treatment building?
Right, right.
Can you share with what you and I've discovered, you know, I think it was the last year or the year before, we discovered what their responsibility is?
Yeah. So the Water Department is responsible for the water treatment and all the functions that go on inside of the building as it relates to the treatment of the water. Lucky us, the School Department is on the hook for all the maintenance of the building itself. We, I discovered an MOU between the School Department and the Select Board from back in 2013, where we, we took over ownership of the maintenance of these buildings.
And some of them make a little bit more sense than others, because some of them support primarily the schools, but, but a couple of them also support residential areas. And that's where it starts to get a little like, oh, I wouldn't have thought that, you know?
Yeah. It's, it's a real treat to, to own them and maintain them. It's a good time. If anybody ever wants a tour, I'd be happy to take you through any one of them. So, yeah, that's the wastewater treatment exterior. And the next one is inside the building. So, we're responsible for the, the building envelope itself, but we're also responsible for making sure the building has heat and ventilation. The boiler next door in the Abbott Wastewater Treatment Plant, once again, very difficult to tell in the pictures, but significant amount of rust. The boiler is, we had a few issues with it last year. We got it running. I, I don't really want to push our luck and continue to try and run it for subsequent years. So, we do have a quote from J.A. Healy for a new oil-fired burner in there. The quote was for about $23,000. I included a little extra money in there to recommission the exhaust fan that you can see in the right picture there, that we've been having some electrical control issues with. But we definitely want the exhaust running. Inside these treatment plants is a very caustic environment, and ventilation is very important. So, we'd like to get both of those, the boiler replaced and the ventilation fan running again.
Is it currently a oil system?
Yes. Yep. All right. This one's going to make Mr. Sardella's day over there at Days School. One of the things that, following up from the SMMA feasibility study, Dr. Chu and Valerie and I spent a considerable, considerable amount of time this past spring, meeting with the principals at each of the schools, talking to them about projects that were identified in the SMMA report, but also projects that were maybe near and dear to their hearts as well that maybe weren't in the report. This one was, but when we met with Mr. Sardella at the Days School, one of the things that kept coming up was just the, the lack of color in the building and also the, just the dilapidated lockers in the main hallway. Everything has a very institutional beige sort of look over there at the Days School, and the lockers are sort of a driving force. When you walk through the hallways there, they're all very, well, beige.
Yeah, beige.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. But when you look inside the lockers, you can see at the bottom, they're all pretty rusted out. The door hardware doesn't work well. It, it's just not a great functioning locker for the student and the age groups in the school there.
It was also, it was also built to be a middle school. And so one of the things that he shared with us as we're looking at it is that the size of the lockers just aren't appropriate for the ages of the students that are there as well, too. So I think that would be helpful for us to put something that's more age-appropriate.
Yeah, correct. So, these lockers are very much in line with what you would have seen in the mid-'60s. And we have plenty of them. I think right now there's a total of 570-something lockers in the building, which even if we did reconfigure grades and move things around down the road, I don't know if I'd ever think we'd see that many kids in that building again. So we've got a proposal to replace the second floor and the first floor lockers with single-tier lockers. If you look closely, you'll notice that we're dealing with two different sizes of lockers. And the reason for that is up on the second floor, what we've discovered is, behind the sloping tops of the lockers is an awful lot of hidden wiring that's been run through there over the years. So, my concern with going to a shorter locker is that I'm exposing more eyesores than I really care to, to get into. So we did decide to go with the same height lockers on the second floor that are currently there now. But what we can do is we can drop the shelves and the hooks in those lockers so that it's more appropriate for the age group that's going to be using them. And we can pick any color we want, something a little more vibrant that's not-
Beige?
Yeah, no, no more beige. I think we want to, I think we want to zhuzh it up a little bit in the, in the Days School and bring a little color in there.
It's, it's one of the things that we talked about when we were, when we were touring the buildings, is that the, the teachers at the Days School have done a phenomenal job of making their classrooms very welcoming and warm, and they've done nice work at the very, at the entrance. They put that beautiful mural in there. But when the hallways are full of just beige metal, there's only so much that, that, that they can do at the school. And so that was kind of, you know, the idea of other, all the other elementary schools have found ways to, to sort of brighten up the hallways as well. And so I think this would be a good opportunity to help the Days School.
Yep. And I, I've already told Mr. Sardella that he needs to start forming a color selection committee, because that's one discussion I don't get involved in. So, he might be looking for volunteers on that one, so. And it's also worth noting, too, that on each floor, there'll be six ADA compliant lockers as well. All right. The Nab-Nassett Library HVAC. So this unit has been out of commission for a little while. Anyone who has a student that goes to Nab-Nassett either during the regular school year and the summer program knows that the library's been running off portable ACs for two summers now. So this unit is past due to be replaced. What we've discovered is that it had a compressor blow up on it, and when we brought a company in to come and try and attempt to service that compressor, they discovered that the extent of the damage was well beyond just the compressor being blown. If you look closely at the picture on the left, you can see that there's been a little bit of vandalization to the coil on the unit itself. We, we think we understand how, I'm going to assume they were teenagers, got up on the roof of the building and did a little bit of artwork on the coil, but between the compressor, the coil, and the age of the unit, it's a little too far gone to invest significant dollars in to repair it at this point. We do have a quote from T.G. Gallagher to replace that unit with a completely new packaged unit that'll sit on the same existing curbing that's on the roof now.
Is their coil removed, or was it destroyed?
It, it's destroyed. It's, it's in place. And on the picture on the left, if you can look closely, you can see that there's a little bit of graffiti written onto it. That's kind of like the same coil that you'd see on the backside of your air conditioner at home.
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody did some artwork on that.
And anytime you compress those fins, it reduces the effectiveness.
Yeah, exactly. Yep. So, yeah. The unit, I believe, was installed in the late '90s when the renovation happened, so that would put it at about the end of its useful life.
No other concerns about students getting up there or putting a barrier around it, or?
We've identified the spot where they were gaining access to the roof, and I'm working on some plans to put something on there. The, on the back of the building where the generator is, there's a seven-foot tall chain-link fence, and they can climb to the top of the fence. I'm not going to actually explain that.
Yeah.
Forget I said that. I don't know where they got up there. No idea. All right, ready for the next one? All right. Robinson School curbing. So, obviously, we're in the midst of getting into a process with the MSBA to figure out what we're going to be doing as a district with the Robinson School. So that, you know, that's a challenge in and of itself. You know, we're trying to figure out where's the right place to spend money on the Robinson and where, where do we not want to spend money. We met with Mr. Lacoste, and he identified a few concerns with the building, and one of the top concerns he had was the crumbling curbing out in front of the place. As you can see, it's, it's falling apart. We've lost pretty significant chunks of it all up and down the line, between the front door and all the way around where the buses pick up. So this proposal is to replace 800 linear feet of curbing along the front of the, in front of the Robinson School.
Hey, Jeff, can you just signal to us, what's the, so the reason this would come before the MSBA stuff is just because it needs to be addressed right away, or is this something that normally wouldn't fall within the scope of what we're looking to do with the MSBA work?
It, it's something that, you know, if we don't, if you, you know, if you look at the picture on the left, if we don't address those concerns, what's going to happen is the whole walkway is going to deteriorate and fall apart. The curbing is really what holds it all together. When we come at it with plows in the wintertime, you know, they're, they're going to make contact with that. So, if we continue to let it go like that, we're going to be looking at more than just replacing a curb. We'll be looking at a whole walkway instead. And at this point, we don't really know what extent the, the MSBA process is going to lead us to with Robinson, but we do know that it's going to be at least a few years before we-
Five to seven years, probably.
Yeah. So we need to figure out how to get, you know, bridge that gap and do what repairs are needed. And I would say that this is definitely a needed repair over there.
I would say it's also a safety hazard stepping off that curb, so.
Can you, can you orient us a bit? Is this the, you, when you say the front, right? Like, I feel like the front of Robinson is counterintuitive. So this is like, but the playground, is the playground like to the right in these pictures?
Correct. So if you were, if I was looking at that picture on the left, the playground would be on my right. The front door would be remotely right in front of me, and then the picture in the center is kind of looking down the lane before you turn right to where the bus drop-off is, so.
So this is a walkway that's being used by students that are coming out the door, going to the playground, yeah?
And there's other spots around the school.
Yeah.
This is just where those pictures are from, but they, but it, but it's actually happening all the way around.
Yeah. It's, it's 800 feet worth, so it pretty much stretches the entire span of the walkway.
Have you had any conversations with DPW before going to capital?
I've talked to DPW about it. I think with their diminished bandwidth, they, they're having some manpower issues. And it's not necessarily their forte, paving curbs.
Okay.
So, the contractor that gave us this proposal, I, I'll give him the benefit of the doubt, he kinda did so with limited information. I, I would anticipate that the work that we're actually gonna do is gonna come in much less than the 40K we're asking for. But we wanted to cover ourselves, because there is some peripheral sort of stuff that, you know, we wanna have available money to address if, if need be, when he's got it opened up. So, but I would, I would expect that it's gonna be much less.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next. Okay. We actually have two generators that we're gonna be replacing. And I'm sorry, I didn't put a slide in for the second one, because I already presented it to Capital last week.
Stony Brook.
But I can catch you up to speed on that one, too. But this is the Blanchard generator. Much like the roof last year, the generator is as old as the building itself. So, it's 30, 32 years old, almost 33. It's, it's led a, a good life, but a hard life. As you can see, it's pretty rusted out. There's definitely evidence of some mice who have taken up residence in there. And for the past few years, we've been, we've been having to invest a little bit of maintenance dollars into it each year. Last year, to the tune of about 4,000, to keep it going. Obviously, the Blanchard is a, a shelter if, if significant power outages were to happen around town. So, we need to make sure that that infrastructure's working and in good, in good order. So.
So, in that, I mentioned the Stony Brook generator in our last meeting, because we talked about it in Capital.
Okay.
We're talking about using our funds to replace that, because it's a more timely. Can you talk about the difference between these two and why we would go to Capital with this?
Yeah.
For them to fund it as well?
Yep. Yeah, fundamentally, the, the difference between the two is, this one's functioning. The other one is not. We actually, they, they attempted to bring the temporary generator out there today. That didn't work out well, 'cause their temporary generator needs some work. So, we're, we're working on getting Stony Brook set up with a temporary unit until we can get out and get the new one installed. But this one currently is still in working order, and that's why it takes less of a priority as Stony Brook.
The Stony Brook one is also somewhat more critical infrastructure with the treatment plant.
Correct. It, it-
It's a larger-
Yeah. Right. It services the treatment plant, the school, but the, you know, and over there, the treatment plant also captures everything coming from the, the housing across from the school as well. So.
Just a small feedback before Friday, to just add that, somewhere on here, that Blanchard is the, is a, what's the word you just used? Emergency shelter?
Yeah.
Just to capture it there.
Yep.
I know we've got a couple new members on Capital.
Thank you. Okay. So, it sounds like Dr. Chu's already given everyone an update on Stony Brook then?
Just the Stony Brook generator. I talked, I did talk about that as an update from our last meeting.
All right, perfect.
Thanks.
All right. Well, moving forward. So, the Blanchard wastewater treatment plant roof and HVAC. I recently found out, much to my disappointment, that I cannot use contingency funds that we have left over from the Blanchard roof and HVAC project to, to do the wastewater treatment plant. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to put that back out to bid and, and do it as a standalone project. I, I, unfortunately, when we, when we put in our application with the MSBA for the accelerated repair program, my, my predecessor did not include any mention of the wastewater treatment plant in that application, which I completely understand why he did not, because it's, it wasn't reimbursable by the MSBA, being a treatment plant. But unfortunately, the language limits us as to being able to do that with extra money, which we do have a good amount of extra money left in our budget. So, basically, this roof is the same age as what the Blanchard main building roof was. 32-year-old roof, 32-year-old HVAC, extremely caustic environment inside of the plant. So, both the roof and HVAC on the, the rooftop HVAC need to be replaced over there. So, the, the cost, what you're seeing here is, we have estimates from J.D. Rivet Roofing, who's the company who did the main building roof, and Premier Mechanical, who did the HVAC over there as well. So, we do have quotes from them. And this also includes the cost for design and bid services as well, to have an architect and engineer design the scope of the project and help us get it out to bid.
Yep. Thanks.
Okay. Westford Academy trustee field lighting. This one has been in the database for probably about eight years now. I know Jim Antonelli put it in there back in about 2016. Long story short, we have old telephone pole-style poles surrounding the field. We have four total poles, eight fixtures per pole. And I've been working for the town in three years. In each of those years, we've had to do a pretty significant amount of repair every August, leading up to football season. What we have on there now are 15-watt metal halide light bulbs with integrated ballasts that we're spending probably about $2,500 a year just on the components themselves. That doesn't include labor and time and the rental of a lift to make repairs on these lights. And, and really, at the end of the day, what we have is kind of an inadequate lighting package in and of itself. Jeff Bunyan did write a letter of support in this, which is also included in the database, and, and sort of expounded on all the reasons why we really need to get a new lighting system. And one of which is, is really safety for the players on the field, especially when we start to lose lights. But also, it doesn't really provide a lot of adequate lighting for pedestrian walkways around the field and the track itself. So, what we've proposed is a new lighting system around the field, four poles, made of galvanized aluminum, replacing the old wooden poles. There'll be eight fixtures, significantly less wattage, obviously moving to LED fixtures. And unfortunately, we don't qualify, we don't have the runtime to qualify for any significant energy rebates for these. But there would definitely be a, an, a substantial amount of savings switching over to the new system. We have a proposal from Premier Sports Lighting for $300,000 to do this project. And the best part of this proposal is, it's a 25-year warranty on parts and labor. If a bulb goes out in 25 years, the company that installed it will come out and replace the bulbs for us. So, no more, we won't have to borrow the fire truck or the ladder truck anymore to get up there and try and replace parts. So. Yeah. Any questions about field lighting?
I don't have a question about field lighting, but knowing that we're about to move on to the updates, I'm wondering if, could you just explain for a minute the conversations that we've had about, 'cause a lot of people have also asked the school committee members questions about Westford Academy roof and the HVAC system at Westford Academy.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that is very much on your radar. But since it's not articulated on this list, per se, could you kinda just talk about that for a second as to, like, what our, what our strategy is with trying to work towards helping the HVAC system at Westford Academy?
Yes. That's gonna be tough to sum up quickly.
Right.
Most of you all know that we've been having conversations with a company called Amaresco for the past couple of years for a performance contract. The town has continued to work with Amaresco on the draft IGA. That is a process that's still ongoing. I don't wanna say more than I should, but we're, I think we're at the point where we're trying to figure out if we are gonna continue to, to potentially do work with them moving forward or not. And one of the things that's been, been kinda held up in that decision-making process is the conversation about HVAC systems, building management systems, particularly as it circles around Westford Academy. Those are the two big pieces of the pie that were part of that conversation. I would say right now that next year, I'm gonna be coming back, asking for a significant amount of money to do the building management systems in the six schools. I believe that's phase one to what we wanna do with our HVAC. And I believe that's what's causing, I think that's, that's the part of our systems that is giving me the most run for my money at this point. We're, we're kinda held, we're kinda held hostage by Siemens and an antiquated building management system right now. So, I would say that that's gonna be phase one to get the six schools integrated into a new building management system. And then, the Westford Academy roof and HVAC is gonna be coming in subsequent year after that. Maybe subsequent one or two years after that. 'Cause that's gonna be a significant ask in of itself.
But there is this interconnectedness.
There, there, yes, yes, very much so. One might ask, why am I prioritizing the trustee field lighting over HVAC and building management systems? The reason why I put this in here in this particular process, or, or in, in this particular slot, is our field turf is coming up on the end of its useful life, according to what it's, the standards for field turf. This is definitely a project we're gonna wanna do before we entertain having to redo the field turf at Westford Academy. Typically, you get about 10 years out of a field. We're at eight years now. Right now, it's testing very well. Jeff Bunyan had it tested last year, and it, it did very well with that. It's, it's trending as a field that's about five years old instead of eight. But there's no doubt that we wanna get this done before we do any other major improvements to the field. And I know that turf is gonna be a few years away. So, that's the reason why I wanted to get it done sooner rather than later.
Thanks.
And right now, we have four fixtures out currently. That just went out on us last week. So.
It was already dimmed to start.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Especially around the walkways.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, that, we had an issue there. About a year and a half ago, somebody fell-
Yeah.
Off, off of a walkway, because they're, they're really not well-lit. So, we, we wanna, we wanna get better with that. So, these poles would have eight or nine fixtures at the top of the, at the top of the pole. But we also included some fixtures about halfway down to get the pedestrian walkways better lit. So, making it a little safer around the field, reducing liability there.
Especially 'cause some of it's on an incline, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Particularly towards the front. I mean, that's scary.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think what you're gonna find with this LED system, I, I spend my entire life at my kids' athletic events, so I see a lot of these fields in action. And it really is impressive what you can do with them. It, it's not an extra with this system, but they have the whole theatrical light. Like, if we score a touchdown, you can kinda do some cool stuff with the-
Watched WA play a great game against Chelmsford last Friday night, and it felt like a-
Yeah.
Concert show, the way that-
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's pretty cool what you can do with them now. So, and that's, once again, that's not even an extra. That's the base model of controls that they, that comes with the system. So, yeah.
You'll get savings also with the instant on, as opposed to turning it on an hour before you actually need them.
Absolutely. Yeah, with the, with the metal halide bulbs that we have currently, there's a pretty steep ramp-up time. You need to warm them up for at least a half an hour, 40 minutes. So, definitely significant savings to be had from an operations perspective. And I love that warranty. I won't have to rent a lift there for a long time. So.
Well, let's just hope the company stays in business.
Oh, I hope so. Yeah, yeah. Good, good point.
Are they closed?
I'm a glass is at fault, I think.
Uh, no, they're not.
Oh, okay.
No, they're, they're, it's interesting. There's only a few major players in the stadium lighting game, and they are kinda spread out. But they have local subcontractors in every region that they work with. So, yeah. So, that's the end of my new request for this year. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, thoughts, before I move on to updates, or?
I just wanted to add that if you've never been on Capital, there's a request form that department heads and employees fill out. And in addition to, I just really appreciate the slideshow, right? Like, pulling out the highlights, the pictures, making it like easily digestible. I really appreciate that. And I wanna acknowledge that it's extra on top of the request form. So, thank you.
A picture's worth a thousand words, right? All right. Well, I, I have a few projects that came, I can provide some updates on.
Thank you.
So, as I mentioned earlier, the Blanchard roof and HVAC project started as soon as kids got out of school back in June. And we've been going at it hot and heavy ever since. We are still in the process of working through our punch list items over at the school. But the roof and edge metals are all substantially completed at this point, with just a couple small punch list items up there. And the HVAC is rounding in the form as well. So, all things considered, we're probably hoping to have project close out by the end of November, completely done at that point, if everything goes to plan. We did lose a couple of weeks this summer due to some equipment, lack of availability of equipment at certain points. And our roofer had some manpower issues early on in the summer, which he, he was able to get back up to speed. But we did lose a couple weeks early on in the summer with that. As I mentioned earlier, our original project budget, our appropriation at town meeting was for 6.4 million. The base bids came back at 4.7 million, plus construction administration costs. We had a total project cost of 5,005.39. We, in the process, we're able to make the roof completely solar-ready. So, we're, you know, leading back to that Amaresco conversation, we'd like to see the roof hold water for a little bit of time. And then, we're gonna start working towards getting the solar system put on the roof. But at this point, we don't have any preconceived notions as to what company we might do that work with. But, you know, the roof is now solar-ready. So.
Probably an oversimplified question, but is that showing, like, $900,000 under budget?
Yeah. Yeah. And the other good news is that, if you recall, I went back to town meeting to ask for an additional million for the HVAC. We were actually able to fit the HVAC into this appropriation as well. So, I'll be returning a significant amount from that budget as well.
Right.
At the time, when we were trying to figure this out, it was debate as to whether or not we were gonna have to replace all the air handlers internal to the building, as well as the rooftop units. And, and that ended up not being the case. So, significant savings there. So. And that's why it's frustrating that I can't do the wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
'Cause I have so much excess funding from this, that it would be very easy to just get the roofer and the HVAC company right over there to do it. But.
Lesson learned.
Not in the cards. Yes. Next time, I will be more particular with our language on the one. So. NAB-NASSIT Playground. This, this one has been a lot of fun. Last year at this time, I had barely just started the conversation about this project. And, you know, here we are a year later, almost ready to wrap it completely. And I am very happy with how swiftly we've been able to mobilize it. And I, I love the design over there. I think anybody who has a chance to go over to NAB and take a look at it, I think it's gonna be pretty cool. And I think the, I think the teachers and faculty might enjoy it just as much as the kids do. There's lots of concrete walking paths. And it, it, it looks really good. I'm very happy with it. So, surfacing, as you can see, the red and the blue surfacing colors were getting installed last week. And we're hoping, or being told, that we're hopefully gonna be able to turn this over to the, to the school at the end of, at the end of the month, end of November. So, we're, we're trending in a good direction. And, yeah, MJ Cataldo, the company out of Air, who's doing the construction work, has been great to deal with. And interesting, fun fact, Joe Cataldo's granddaughter Sawyer is a student at NAB-NASSIT School. So, she's been some free quality assurance for her grandpa over there, making sure they're getting the job done right. So. So, to that point, the playground itself should be done by the end of November. And the plan is, right now, we still have the current existing playgrounds at the school. Our goal is to come back in during Christmas break and have Cataldo demolish those, get those out of the way, and then, and then rough grade those back out. And then, the plan is, they'll come back in the spring and reseed and loam the, the front area on the grass lawn closest to plain road. And then, subsequent, next summer, my goal is, we, we still have capital dollars remaining from the, the project to expand the back driveway back there, to widen the parking, the driveway situation. What was holding us up from commencing with that project was the location of our two existing playgrounds. So, now that those playgrounds are out of the way, we have this playground that's all concealed with fencing. I believe we eliminated all the friction points that engineering came up with when we were looking at the driveway expansion. So, my goal is to- So, uh, my goal is to hopefully get something out to bid in the spring for the driveway and, and do that work next summer as well with existing capital money that we have.
Does that, by any chance include the emergency driveway slash walking path?
It does.
Because, I mean, I drive by that in the winter and there's a huge puddle there that,
Yeah.
I mean, to have kids and families try to walk through it, it's impossible.
Yeah. And, and I will say the walking path is where I had to bring the DPW into the conversation because the path connects with the public right of way. I need to kinda.
Liaison.
Yeah, I'm gonna handle my driveway at the school and, you know, have those guys. So, and what's interesting is the walking path is so en- enveloped by trees and woods that, um, i- it's gonna be a challenge to really rip that out and regrade it completely. So, um, Gale Associates has their handful of coming up with a plan that's gonna eliminate some of those drainage issues on the path. So.
Uh, I, I think it's important to note that it's not just the walking path, though. That is that egress as well.
Yep.
It's, it is actually supposed to be vehicle ready for.
Yes. And, and it is because we actually drive our vehicles on it to plow every year. So, um, and it, that's becoming a tough chore cause it's, it's a lot of hills and undulations in there. So, yeah. So that is part of that project. Yes.
Can I clarify on that last bullet where it says design, the, it, the design part already took place, right?
We have a preliminary design. It's more like a 60% design. It's not, it's not something that's ready to go out to bid. Um, you know, they gave us their preliminary design. We have to go back to them with notes, which we have from our town engineer.
Okay.
And then we'll get it to a 90% construction design document phase. So.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
One of the, one of the things that I, I appreciate too is just the, the impact of both, first of all, the, the work that you've done on all three of these projects. You haven't talked about the Stony Brook one yet, but, um, not only the work that you've done taking them all on in one summer, I think has been phenomenal and the, the way you've juggled all that. The other piece is the way the schools have responded to the interruptions. Both Blanchard and NAB-NASIT have had different interruptions to, you know, their normal activities. And, you know, the, the students and the staff, uh, you know, they've just, they've responded really well. And, you know, so I appreciate all of their perseverance, if you will, um, through whether it's interruption to a playground or whether it's interruptions in the classroom because of the stuff that's happening above their heads. Um.
Or people walking by the, the windows on ladders. I heard that from one teacher.
That's right. Right, right. Yeah. But, uh, you know, it's, uh, I think everybody has, everybody's been on the same team, which has been great.
Yeah. Yeah, it has been great. And I, I'm not, I'm not gonna make it a habit of trying to do these projects during the school year. But I will say in the case of the playground project where we had two playgrounds that we can still use, the kids have really been enjoying seeing the process. And, uh, interesting, funny story, I guess, at NAB, they give out stars, NAB-NASIT stars. If you do something really good. Well, all the construction guys had stars. Apparently they, there were a couple pairs of work boots next to the site and the kids left stars in their boots for them the other day. So I think it's been a lot, uh, a, a learning experience for the kids to watch this whole process unfold. So I know, I know they've enjoyed watching. So, you know, and I think they'll get even more enjoyment out of the playground itself. So. All right. Uh, Stony Brook Track and Courts. There are no updates. We haven't, we haven't started it yet. We made the decision, I, you know, given the timing of how everything happened this summer with the other projects and it, it just, it got to the point where we knew we weren't gonna get a bid package out until September, October. Um, really wasn't the right time of the year to dig into that. And then I ran the risk of disrupting not one season, but two seasons, the fall cross country and the spring track season. So the decision was made, uh, that we'd put a pin in this and put this out to bid in January. And with the hopes that when school gets out in June, we're gonna start this project. And from what I'm being told by our engineers, it's the type of project we should be able to wrap it in the course of a summer. If we, if we can break ground right in June when, when the kids leave, um, so that's the plan. We're gonna, we're gonna put it out to bid in January, hopefully get favorable numbers back and, and start this in June and get it done in one summer. So.
This, this was interesting, this one was interesting to me because of the, um, learning, the impact of our town meeting timeline on like the construction process and the bid process. So remember last year, we had a date for town meeting and it got moved two mu- two months out. And so it impacts things like this where you're operating on a timeline and have things sort of penciled in. And then you realize, nope, I can't do that until I have a vote. So.
And we also, yeah, we had to wait, we had to drill some holes in the track to, to test the soil beneath that. And I couldn't do that during the track season. So I had to wait for that as well. So, yeah. And I, I definitely like having town meeting in March. It gives us time to plan and get everything teed up, ready for the summer months. So.
Thank you.
So those are my updates. Um, there was one other thing that, uh, is a recent development that Dr. Chu wanted me to mention tonight. Um, we, uh, Mike Edwards, the new assistant town manager and myself, we've been aggressively, uh, working with, uh, N-Grid and some performance expeditors on some energy efficiency work. Uh, we're trying to take advantage of some available grant funding and rebates that are out there. Uh, National Grid has a tendency to, you know, up and all of a sudden change their rebate models and start throwing out incentives, uh, that are pretty tough to pass up. And that was the case this past August where, uh, they came up with some rebates where they were offering 50% of the project cost for lighting projects. Um, given the fact that our town meeting schedule and some of our town bylaws can be, you know, make it difficult for us to act on those projects. Mike and I have been putting our heads together, trying to figure out how we can, as a town, be a little more nimble and act on these incentives and rebates when they come about. So we've made a lot of progress on that over the last month. And I'm happy to report that, um, Westford Academy and Rita Miller School have been approved for, um, uh, lighting retrofits, uh, that are gonna come as no cost to the town, no out-of-pocket cost. Um, and we're gonna be doing the projects through on-bill repayment. Um, so after, after the on-bill repayment period's over, we're gonna be saving about $60,000 a year in out, operating costs based on the estimates from National Grid. So that's exciting news. And then we have weatherization projects that we're working on scheduling as well that are pretty rebate incentive-heavy.
And those two schools were selected after you looked at all of the schools because of the, the maximum
Yeah.
amount of savings.
Yeah.
So it wasn't that they, it wasn't that we, they ignored the other schools. They, they realized they could, they could get the, the biggest bang for the buck with, um, Miller and, and Westford Academy.
Yeah. Yeah, that was where the most savings, uh, were. Uh, but there, there will be more schools to follow. Uh, the original timeline for this was to get these done before the end of the calendar year. So obviously you could understand my terror when we're talking about doing two massive lighting projects in the middle of October and trying to get it done before the end of December. So, um, it was, uh, we, I was very happy to hear when the grid came back to us and said, oh, we'll give you until, um, March 31st to get them done. So we, we have a little extra time to do those. But, um, it's very exciting, uh, that we were able to take advantage of those. And it's also exciting that we, we are now positioned better to be able to move on these rebates a little quicker in the future, um, especially using performance expeditors and understanding what the on-bill repayment model looks like. Given the financial constraints of the town, we still wanna be moving towards our clean energy goals and, and, and sustainable projects. And this, this is, uh, what appears to be a great way for us to do that. So, a lot of exciting stuff to come with, uh, weatherization work and lighting in the schools. So.
Well done. Thank you so much.
I admire your diligence.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jim.
We're gonna move on to the policy section of our agenda. Good night, Maddie. Um, so first up, I'm gonna let you drive this truck. But, um, I just wanna make sure we don't forget to waive reading of all of these. So anything that has a final reading or a first reading does require a vote to waive the reading. Um, so why don't we start with, uh, P3, can we do them all? No. Let's do the two final readings together. How about that? So I'll mo- I'll move to waive the reading of P3, 3505 and P7211.
Second.
All right. All in favor of waiving those, the reading of those two policies? Thank you. Okay. Why don't you tip us off into whichever one of those first?
Oh, okay. Um, so I was actually gonna suggest that we take these a little out of order.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so maybe we'll, I know, right? Why don't we, we can waive the readings of the other two and then just get that out of the way.
Yeah.
So there's, um, so.
So I'll move to waive the reading of P4204 slash 5204. And we'll do them all. P5303 and P4203.
And I'll second that.
Okay. And all in favor of waiving the reading of all of those. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, I think that it just makes sense logically, cause some of these things we're gonna be discussing, um, and later.
Sure. Got it. Now I'm seeing what you're putting down. Got it.
Points of business. Um, so I'm looking at, uh, just for reference, uh, I'll be talking about the first reading ones. So there's, um, one, two, three, uh, four policies that I'd like to talk about first, um, all of which are new to you folks. Um, the first of which is, uh, P4204 and P5204. Uh, those are, are, uh, non-discrimination and harassment policies. Um, quick background. The current edits that are in front of you, uh, came to policy on the advice of our legal counsel. Specifically because of, um, some changes in, um, to Title IX. Um, and these changes are a reflection of those. Um, and also just a, a, a way of kind of bringing everything up to date. Um, so 4204 and 5204 are the exact same policy. Um, we have them listed in our school policies under, uh, two sections. As you all know, uh, there's seven sections to all of our policies, uh, which have to do with different categories of policies. Um, one of this has to do with, uh, non-discrimination and harassment of students. The other has to do with non-discrimination and harassment of, uh, staff members. Um, so that's why it's the same policy. Again, changes to Title IX, um, we're not taking away rights of any of our staff members or students. If anything, we're making them, uh, more encompassing. Uh, there's specific language that has to do with, uh, pregnancy-related conditions um, and other, uh, special protected categories essentially. Um, so that's what's in front of you, um, in 4204 and 5204. 5303 and 4203 are again, uh, brother-sister policies, um, which are the same, which currently exist within our, our policies. What's in front of you is a, uh, completely redacted document to remove those policies outright. Um, and that was at the, uh, suggestion of, uh, again, legal, legal counsel, uh, that those existing policies are either out of date or redundant, uh, given the changes to Title IX and the other changes that are in front of you. So, Lori, did I miss anything?
No, I think you got it.
All right.
So we're gonna do those like the last batch, which is policy is meeting and sort of working on them real time. And any feedback can be channeled to the policy subcommittee.
Correct. Yeah. So if there's, if there's concerns, uh, about the fact that we're essentially removing two policies and the changes to our current harassment and non-discrimination policies, if there's concerns about those, um, these will be posted and there's a way of commenting it. Or you can reach out to any of our policy members, Catherine Clear, Lori and myself.
Thanks.
And two meetings, um, until we will vote on this? Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
I do have one question about the harassment is, um, could we specifically call out where it's covered now? For those that may be concerned about, you know, the idea of losing something that's spelled out, just, um, for, for future discussion. Just, you know, provide references to where, um, that coverage is still provided.
Yeah. Before I, um, make a guess at that, I, I'm gonna presume that, um, council suggested that we, we get rid of the other policies because it's either covered by the Massachusetts regs, which are ever-changing, right? And, um, um, I mean, the ones that we have there are from 2007. So.
Yeah. So I'm just saying for, for the public to, to know like where, where their coverage still lies. It would be good just to, to have that education discussion.
There's existing laws that cover this.
That's my understanding. And.
You don't want anything in writing that would take away from the coverage that is broader.
Or is in conflict with, yeah, absolutely.
So just, like I said, just for, for clarity and transparency to, to just specifically.
So thank you so much for doing that.
Cool. Great. So those are, those are the, um, the two that are up for first reading. Any questions on those? Uh, if something comes up, again, you know how to get ahold of us. Um, for the, Valerie, am I okay to proceed to the next?
Sure.
Um, I think 3505 probably makes sense to tackle first. Um, that is, you should all be familiar with it. Short and sweet, uh, for those just tuning in. Our current policy on, uh, warrants, signing of warrants is to have four school committee members with wet ink sign a warrant. It's not really feasible, nor is it our practice for at least three out of 12 months of the year.
Right.
Um, so what we have in front of you is a, um, a replacement to that where the school committee chair would be the sole signature required for each warrant. And then the other additional language has to do with allowing for us to, um, use an electronic signature whenever practicable as opposed to, again, having a wet ink signature. So, um, that's what's in front of you. Uh, I believe the vast majority of our discussion the last time that we had about this was focused around concerns about, well, what if the chair is not available? And I, I think that we all came to a consensus that there are other parts of, of our current policy that allow the, uh, vice chair to step up whenever the chair is not available. So.
And I think adding the electronic signature speaks to that as well. Adds, adds the flexibility in that it's not asking someone to be on-site at, what's our address? Uh, you know, 23 Depot, physically every two weeks on a Wednesday, right? That there's an electronic option for that. So this would be the moment for any last discussion on this before a vote to approve. Sorry.
No, I was just gonna.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, updated version of P3505 approval of warrants.
Second.
Any last discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Zero. Okay.
Okay. Uh, the last one, um, and just, just for reference too, I, you guys have looked at the agenda. Uh, we'll be discussing these, the, the practical effectiveness after
Yep.
um, later agenda items. So 7211. 7211 is our school committee policy that has to do with naming of structures. As you all know, uh, there was a particular request upon this body, uh, to look into a subsection of, uh, Westford Academy and name it after a, uh, long-serving, um, Westford Public Schools, uh, community member. Um, through that process, we, uh, formed our, our naming committee and, um, then came to, I, I think, there were some concerns raised about, um, that we would've had to suspend that policy as written, uh, to put forward a name of recognition as, uh, we were being asked to, uh, without putting this name to town meeting. So, policy was aware of 7211. Um, we've spent quite a few meetings discussing it. Um, for, as you all know, uh, our original policy was if there was a. For, as you all know, uh, our original policy was if there was a request upon the school committee, the school committee was then, um, uh, through the direction of the chair to form a, uh, ad hoc naming committee. A naming committee would convene, would discuss options, um, and would evaluate whether or not, uh, such a structure should be named after that individual with very specific requirements as to that, uh, individual or, uh, group, um, having made a contribution to humanity, uh, education, uh, and the like. After that, this body, uh, was then supposed to suggest that name to town meeting. Okay. The amended policy that is in front of you, uh, deviates from that, uh, pretty substantially. The first, um, under the current policy that we've put in front of you, uh, seven two one one as amended, if the school committee receives a request to, um, name a structure after an individual, um, the naming committee would convene as, um, as they did before under the direction of the chair, um, or at the behest of the chair. And then, um, I guess our committee would determine whether or not what was being named was either a school itself or a subsection of a school.
Yep.
If it was a subsection of a school, um, that would solely be within the purview of this body, uh, the school committee itself, there would be absolutely no requirement that, um, town meeting be involved, um, and the membership could vote presuming that they had a majority, um, to name whatever subsection of a school after an individual or group. Buildings are different and this is, um, where we as a policy, uh, subcommittee came down upon that, uh, schools themselves are just different. We only have nine of them. They're big and they're important. Um, they're a big part of the community. So, uh, at the suggestion of one of our committee members, um, we came to the, uh, the consensus that it, there should be a unanimous vote if a building's involved by the school committee. If there's a unanimous vote, uh, presuming there's seven members at the time, seven members now, right? A unanimous vote, um, then that vote wouldn't need to go to town meeting. If there was not a unanimous vote to, um, name a building after a certain individual, then it, um, it would be up to the school committee's discretion as to whether or not to put that, um, to a town meeting vote. So the idea was is that the town meeting vote would essentially be a failsafe if, um, any one of us seven had concern about naming a school building after an individual, uh, that it would, um, it could go to town meeting, uh, for a town vote. And that would make sense if we only have nine buildings in town, um, and if it's something that big, then, um, if one of our members believes that it's in the best interest to go to town meeting, then so be it. So that's essentially what's in front of you. Other than that, the language is the exact same. Uh, we kept in all the language regarding whether or not that individual, um, should be someone who has.
Criteria.
Criteria, right. Has made an outstanding contribution to education, humanity, uh, displayed outstanding leadership. All those requirements are the same, right? So, uh, you could never nominate me to, uh, name me after something. I've done none of those things. Uh, but, um, anyways, that's, um, so all the requirements are there and that's essentially what's in front of you. So that's what we're asking for you to vote on today.
Any discussion? I think we've had some good discussions along the way. I feel like it's been a good process and if there's no further, I'll take a motion to approve P seven two one one.
Motion to approve P seven one one.
Seconded.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, for leading us fear, fearlessly through that, uh, agenda item. The next one is warrant signatures. Um, so this is, as you alluded to, sort of putting into practice the policies that we have just set, um, as approved. However, on reading this, I don't know that we need this step.
No.
Yeah, I think, I think in the past, I think we've, we're tracking this agenda item as when it was, somebody should be appointed to sign the approval warrants, but the new policy clearly says the chair. So I think that's inherent in the vote we just took. So I'm going to move us right along.
Okay, great.
Fantastic.
And that brings us to the press box naming and right back to Sean. Did you get a sip of water in that?
Yes.
Did I get you an intermission?
All right.
And I want to start by, to, to hopefully, if someone is very interested in this and somehow this is the first they're hearing of it, we do talk about the history of this, the original submission, um, back, we did a great overview, Sean did, at our August twenty-sixth meeting. We also had members of the naming committee come to our September sixteenth meeting. All of those recordings are available in open meetings and minutes. So feel free to summarize as you will, as you wish tonight, um, to bring us to a expected vote.
Yeah. Um, okay. So now is the policy of seven two one one in practice. Again, there has been a request on, uh, this body to name, uh, a subsection of Westford Academy, namely the Press Box, uh, which oversees Trustees Field after a, um, a longtime Westford Academy, um, faculty member and coach, um, and community member. Uh, that, that person is Mr. Michael Parent, um, who's spent years working for Westford, uh, particularly as a football coach, as a baseball coach, um, special education teacher and dean for many years. So, um, that's the individual who's in front of us. We, at this body solicited feedback from the community. Uh, we even heard from the naming committee, which convened, I believe in June. Those minutes were taken. Uh, that naming committee had suggested, had recommended to us to confirm Mr. Parent, um, for such a recognition. And, um, those minutes and the supporting materials were posted on our website, I believe, in July.
Yep.
Those have been on the, uh, Westford Public Schools website since July. We have gotten very little feedback. Um, I will say the feedback that we have received, um, I would say has been addressed by the amendments to seven two one one. So the feedbacks, uh, the feedback that we heard from the community all had nothing to do with Mr. Parent, but was more concerned about our current policy and that, um, concerns about deviating from our current policy.
Yep.
Um, so again, these things have been posted. There's been next to no feedback, uh, besides on the policy itself. In terms of the recognition, um, for those who have concerns about, um, uh, the, the school's finances, which I do too, um, this will be a cost-neutral addition. Uh, there is a plaque that's, uh, being produced and that is being funded by a, a donation to the school by a, um, a, a family. So cost-neutral, um, and again, if anyone has concerns about, um, uh, whether or not we follow the policy, the naming committee met, that committee, uh, made a determination that this individual made an outstanding contribution to education, humanity, or our community and has de, uh, demonstrated outstanding, uh, leadership. So that's what's in front of us and I'd ask for, uh, a vote on it and we do not have to be unanimous on this because it is a, uh, substructure. Nor do we need all seven of us and we only have six of us, so, yeah.
So motion to approve the press box naming.
Great. Any final discussion?
Uh, I would just say that hearing the presentations, I think it was a thorough process to vet, um, and it does sound like, uh, Mr. Parent is, uh, definitely a good candidate, um, from at least a large population of, of Westford itself. Uh, I would strongly support it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All those in favor? Great. Thank you. Congratulations. And, um, Sean, you'll follow up just to let the naming committee know of the, um, resolution?
Sure. And I, uh, just real quick, um, I do want to thank our naming committee, who were all volunteers, who said on that, so.
Yep.
Thank you. We make it seem like we do everything ourselves. We don't. We constantly solicit feedback from the community, so thank you.
Yep. Next up is a quarter one financial report from the last three months of FY twenty-five. Welcome Director of Finance Jenny Lynn. And there is a slideshow. Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Thank you for having me. And, uh, I will provide you fiscal year twenty-five quarter one financial status report. Uh, as usual, the first slide, uh, can you move to the first, the second one? The second slide is a summary and breakdown of, uh, our balances by individual function codes. As of quarter one, the available budget for general fund is two point four million dollars, uh, counting for the encumbrances, including the salaries and other expenditure, which represent ninety-six percent of the projected expenditure for the whole fiscal year. Then I will highlight a couple areas in the general fund's operating budget. The first one, next slide please. The first one is function code twenty-three oh five, classroom teachers. Uh, at the end of September, there's a projected balance of a hundred seventy-three thousand for classroom teachers. For fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we budgeted a total offset, a hundred forty-eight thousand from school choice fund to support teacher salary. Uh, as of quarter one, we already utilized seventy-two thousand from school choice. Uh, we will do the necessary, uh, inter-fund transfer as needed when we, uh, going through the fiscal year. The function code twenty-three ten, teacher specialist. There is a small projected remaining balance for nine thousand dollars. Special education teaching position, a portion of the salary could be, uh, charged into IDEA grant two forty. Fiscal year twenty-five's grant full two forties application already in progress. So once the grant is awarded, we will transfer, uh, a portion of the psychologist's salary into the grant two forty. Uh, the salary, uh, covered by the grant two forty varies every year. It depend on, depending on the amount of the grant and, uh, the position will be covered by the grant. Move to next slide. That's function code twenty-three twenty, medical and therapeutic services. This function code covers the salary for a speech therapist, occupational therapist, and B C B A salary, as well as special education contracted services. Westford provide, takes pride in providing free and appropriate education for our special education students. Uh, the total amount, currently we are seeing the necessary special education contracted service are projected to run into a shortfall of a deficit two hundred seventeen thousand dollars. So, uh, we are seeing continued rising costs in this area because that's their service, uh, including a variety of different kind of services provided in district for outside provider. This year, the deficit is mainly due to the psych evaluation. So we do see a deficit in this area that needs to be covered by general fund's other operating budget remaining balance. The next one is function code thirty-three hundred, transportation. We already receive September's regular transportation bill, uh, for yellow bus. The total amount is three hundred thirty-five thousand, uh, based on the contracted rate, four hundred ninety-seven per yellow bus and, uh, one fifty for the lay bus. Uh, we already in contact with D and still waiting for the September's invoice for special education transportation cost. Once we receive September's special education transportation cost, it will give us a clearer picture and a better understanding how much is the total transportation cost for the entire year, which will be helpful for us to make a projection for fiscal year twenty-six. Move to next one. This function code four thousand, that covers facilities operation and maintenance, also networking and telecom. From these bar, bar charts, uh, that gives you a visual illustration about a spending comparison between these two fiscal year. The blue bar represents fiscal year twenty-five spending and, uh, the orange bar represents fiscal year twenty-four. So we can tell from fiscal year twenty-five, in the first quarter, we spent fifty thousand dollars less in custodial services because we were able to utilize custodian subs to help us to reduce custodial overtime cost. And also we spent less for custodial supply purchase in the first quarter. However, for the utility costs and also the building maintenance, uh, building, uh, building security expenses are more than last fiscal year. If you move to next slide, uh, this slide gives you a breakdown for the function code forty-one ten, custodial services. So you can see the comparison between two fiscal year, specifically for the regular, uh, custodian salary, the overtime, uh, cost, the subbing cost and also supplies and materials. Uh, for function code forty-four hundred, network and telecom, uh, the spending has decreased approximately fifty-three thousand for this fiscal year because the data specialist position was eliminated, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five and consolidated into other, uh, school functions. Uh, move to next one. That's our function code for nine thousand. That's total out-of-district tuition. Uh, fiscal year twenty-five, based on the current projection, our total out-of-district tuition, uh, currently shows a deficit of one point five million dollars. Uh, but, uh, you know, that's not the total ending fund balance because we already applied two point four million directly into circuit breaker and, uh, we are also planning to, uh, apply eight hundred twenty thousand from grant two forty fiscal year twenty-five towards this deficit. In addition to that, we, uh, special education department will apply two hundred thirteen thousand, uh, for the valley collaborative, collaborative distribution credit towards this, uh, deficit as well. So if we consider the total deficit one point five, uh, we will apply eight hundred twenty thousand, uh, from the grant two forty and, uh, two hundred thirteen from the valley collaborative distribution credit. The estimated, uh, total deficit by the end of fiscal year is four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. So this deficit will need to be covered by the general fund, the remaining budget as well. So overall, from the general fund operating budget, we are closely monitoring the expenditure to ensure responsive spending for the general fund. Uh, then we will move to next slide for our federal and state grants. The entitlement grants, we have honor title grants, including Title One to Title Four, and also special education grants for fiscal year twenty-five, uh, submission to D C already. Uh, we are currently waiting for D C's final approval for those grants. Once those grants are awarded, uh, we will apply eight hundred twenty thousand into, uh, the, for the fiscal year twenty-four's general fund's, uh, out-of-district tuition. Uh, in addition to competitive grants, uh, we also apply for, um, the grant seven ten and grant seven fifteen, uh, which is called Massachusetts Farming Reimbursed Education. The total amount is eighteen thousand dollars. Following Navnassas Schools' lead, day school is applying for this grant with the hope to build a fresh vegetable garden at day school as well. The last one is, uh, the last one are asset three and grant two seventy-four. These two grants both have the expiration day for September thirty, uh, asset three. Assa 3, as part of the COVID relief funding, already finished its final mission. We have utilized more than half million dollars to support a free four-day kindergarten program. For Grand 274, total amount $33,000 was utilized to transition for the new IP software power school. We also use that to compensate our staff for the transition. These two grants were completely closed for the first quarter of fiscal year '25. Move to next slide. Revolving funds. For our food service revolving account, the balance for the end of first, end of first quarter is $1.6 million, because school committee just approved their food service contract last, last meeting. So the retroactive payment reflecting the new salary raise will be processed in the second quarter payroll cycle. For other revolving account review, finance committee already had a three meeting within the last month, so they are, we are diligently reviewing the revolving account guidelines and procedures. Also, like, for example, for athletic revolving account, bus fee revolving account. So the goal is to evaluate whether the current fee structure can support the sustainable usage for the future fiscal year, so we can utilize the revolving account to help us to offset general fund's operating budget. Next slide is our special revenue fund. School Choice, and we build $528,000 into fiscal year '25's budget offset. We have utilized $190,000 as expected from the School Choice Fund in quarter one, so we will continue to use that to offset general fund's operating budget. The current remaining balance for School Choice is $1.2 million. For Circuit Breaker, there's a great news, because we will receive the reimbursement for fiscal year '25, the total amount for $3,040,000. So these payments reimburse the district for special education tuition services provided during fiscal year '24, and they will be paid each quarter for $760,000. The first quarter payment was delayed until October 3rd within the second quarter, but usually we will receive the full payment within a fiscal year. So this year's total reimbursement is about $400,000 more than last fiscal year. So this entire balance, $3 million, will be docked in the special revenue fund by the end of fiscal year '25, and we will use that $3 million to offset fiscal year '26 general fund's operating budget. So these are the updates for the quarter one, and thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. As usual, thorough and digestible presentation of the information. I do have a follow-up question, but go ahead.
Oh, do you want to go?
No, I was gonna turn it open.
Oh, great, thank you. Jenny, I'm sorry, did you say, why is it 400,000 more? The, the per capita School Choice tuition rate, it's higher than it was in the past, is that right?
So you are talking about Circuit Breaker. The Circuit Breaker's reimbursement rate is higher for fiscal year '24 services.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I, I was interpreting, okay, that's the Circuit Breaker, okay. I was interpreting that we had an additional 400,000 from School Choice, no?
No.
The Circuit Breaker, okay, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Well, my question was gonna be on that, too. Can you just clarify, is that, is that like the state decides the rate every time and it changes, or did we hit a higher threshold?
The rate actually varies every year. For last two fiscal year, we received 75% for the reimbursement, but the rate, the reimbursement rate doesn't remain the same all the time, because last year, the special education tuition increased about 14%. That's why the state increased the reimbursement rate. So that's not guarantee we will receive like a higher amount every single year, but usually it's a little bit more than last fiscal year's reimbursement.
It, it is based on what we spent, right?
Correct.
And then what we qualify for reimbursement. And so, yes, because our special education costs have increased--
Right.
--they've actually voted to increase the aid as well, too.
So it's kind of both.
It's a little bit of both.
Yeah.
Because they don't always fully fund it.
Right.
But as, 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 you know, they voted to, to fund it appropriately to bring us this amount, this is sort of the beginning of our FY '26 conversations, is the fact that we're, we will be seeing $400,000 more in Circuit Breaker, which is good news for us.
Okay.
That, that was gonna be my follow-up, is if I'm reading this, this means that fiscal '26 conversation starts in a slightly less bad place, basically.
Yeah, you could say that, slightly less bad, because Circuit Breaker is better than what we anticipated.
So this is money that is applied next year, it's earned this year, but applied next year.
We can, and so that's a good thing for everybody to kind of understand. Circuit Breaker, we, we can be using it, the best practice is to take what is--
Received.
Received in FY '25, and then apply it to FY '26.
Yeah.
You, and, and that's the best practice that we've continued to follow, but it actually comes to you, and you can begin spending it right away. So that was something that you look at, is like, should you be spending that money sooner? But then you end up with a potential hole later. So our practice is, we receive it in FY '25, and we know that then we use it for FY '26.
Any other questions?
Jenny, your Dr. Drew question about the contracted services around special education. I think there was a mention of psychologists, I'm assuming related to three-year reevaluations and--
Yes.
--some of those.
That's correct.
Yeah, just the capacity we may lack, so--
Yeah.
You know, just to kind of, you know, having that support in-house versus having to outsource that, there's gonna be a bigger cost--
Yeah.
--and just mentioning that to the, to the community.
And, and if we, and it, it's also one of those things that if, if we, it's, it's not only what we have in-house and the capacity that, that we can, you know, maintain and support, but if there's, if there's any leaves there as well, too, then that's an incredibly difficult thing to, to fill, so then you end up having to contract out as well.
And this feels like a three-year, four-year out of COVID, the upswing, you know--
Yes.
--that we assumed with assessments, you know?
Yeah, when we have like a psychologist taking a family, family medical leave, sometimes those services must be provided by the outside provider. That's another reason.
Thank you.
I had a super, super quick last question, which is on the food service, because the, I got, I got this question from the public, I know we've talked about it in finance subcommittee, but I just wanted to use this as an example to talk about here. The parentheses means a credit.
Yes.
And no parentheses is a debit. So each school shows a negative balance, but that's an accounting--
Yes.
--thing. Like, it's a snapshot in time that the money is showing up in the system-wide account, right? Is there anything else you want to add to my half-jilted explanation?
Because at the beginning, we were trying to allocate a system-wide credit into individual schools. However, we consulted the town, and unfortunately, we cannot do that allocation to individual school, because the auditor will look at the system-wise, the grand total from the town side and from the school side. So we need to ensure, the town needs to ensure, honor like a federal and state grant, they stay in one place. That's why you see some deficit in individual school, but some credit, big, huge credit balance for the system-wide, which is, doesn't seem right, but actually is correct.
Okay. And it will just continue to persist like that?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So would there be any benefit to not tracking, because we're getting so much state and federal now as opposed to individual purchases of meals, for example? Is there any benefit to continue to track it at the school level, or just--
Well, I think just for your general accounting, I think the idea that we know that it's gonna reconcile, we know that it'll all work out, but it is important to track exactly how much is, how much is being used, if you will, at every single school.
Yeah, the only--
It just means we have to be okay, we have to be comfortable with the parentheses--
Right.
--knowing that it, it'll, it eventually all gets balanced, yeah.
So the only way for us to check individual, individual schools' ending balance, we have to keep a separate Excel spreadsheet, and to see how many meals we serve for each school, and do the allocation based on how many meals we serve.
Yeah, that's a big lift, we're not--
Yes.
--for just a little bit of comfort. Okay, thank you so much, Jenny, as always.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jenny.
Good job.
Nine-ten on the dot. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?